I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was yes.
Councilmember Sterns? Mayor Pro Tem Wagner?
Ake.
Councilmember Sacklet?
Here.
Councilmember Dingsström?
Here.
Mayor Mortar?
I'm here, thank you. Okay, we have the pleasure tonight of hearing about a project on Interstate 5 in our vicinity from Ed, is it Kernahan?
Ed Kernahan.
Kernahan. From representing J.F. Shea. I see that, in force. Okay, great. Okay. What I'd like to do is invite, I guess you, Ed, will be the kickoff speaker up to the podium. And what I'd like to do is, what I'd like to have you do is just realize that you have about 15 minutes, including questions. And we're here to hear what you have to say, and we'd like to leave some questions for, or some time for questions if we could, before you're finished. Thank you very much. No, I would prefer not because we're being livestreamed and televised, so.
Hi Rob, thank you.
And you may need to wiggle the mic a bit to make sure that we can hear you well. Look at all these constructions.
My name is Ed Kernahan with J.F. Shea, and I just thought because of the nature of this project and getting with Caltrans, we kind of handle it, the city council know what's going on. I get the daily questions in the morning when I get my breakfast burrito for my wife and I, seven sons, so I thought this way I might save a little time for you. What I thought I would do is just share with you the basic plans. If you look at page one and explain the project in a really simplistic form, is the goal of the project is to replace the southbound lanes from the Sacramento River Bridge to just south of Abrams Lake Road with concrete. And what that means is that we're going to be taking out all of the southbound lanes at different stages, and we're going to be putting in concrete, we'll be the new structure, not asphalt. The way it's set up is that there's stages. Now, the stages right now are in transition, we're trying to accelerate the schedule a little bit. We've met with the state, and we've got a really good group that we work with. We've got Nikki Mallory, John Hitten, Rob Lupita Burnett, and we've also got John's daughter here to help us. Anyways, and Sherry Ray is the construction senior for the Redding District. We've worked together for a long time, all of us. We've got about 25, 30 years together. We think we're a pretty good partnership, and so this project, it was originally going to be a three-year project, it still may be a three-year project, but if there's a way we can accelerate the schedule, we're going to try to do it. What'll end up happening on the first stage is we're going to transfer the traffic coming southbound, just south of the Lassen Over crossing, make sure I get this right, over into the northbound lanes, pardon me, just south of Abrams Lake Road. What you'll end up having is the traffic northbound on the right side, going northbound, and you'll have K-rail in the middle divider of the northbound lanes, and you'll have the southbound traffic in the northbound lanes. When you get so far south, you'll have a crossover back into the southbound lanes. Now, on this, the way the project is set up, there was 11 original stages, we're trying to put some stages together to expedite the job and to keep traffic flowing in the smoothest path possible. Most of this is going to go from Abrams Lake Road somewhere south of, it's down by Ream actually, is the first area, or further south if we can, and that should leave open the Lake Street on and off ramps, 89 on and off ramps, the North Mount Shasta on and off ramps, and Dunsmere Motte Road on and off ramps, with some minor staging that will take place when we have to go through those areas. But that is really the project. And like I say, with Caltrans and ourselves, we just think it's better to let the city know what's going on, and so I appreciate getting the opportunity to just come visit with you, and we can answer whatever questions we can for you. That's kind of the simple explanation, but that's really what the project is. So with that, does anybody have any questions of me?
Are you expecting a single northbound, single southbound lane?
Yes, yes. There's not any, there's some areas where there's like, there's three lanes when you come up on the hill coming up to 89 if I remember right, that they'll end up with two lanes northbound for truck traffic going up the hill, but the southbound directions where there's a single lane especially, or not a hill going, the upgrade, there'd be a single lane. And so what they've done is they've, I think the state's done a pretty good job of putting together these plans to take advantage when there's three lanes, so especially any uphill traffic will have the two lanes for trucks. And that's typically where we have our bottlenecks. I'm sure all of you went through our projects in the last couple of years up at Weed, and what you find is the merging that really creates the problem. There's not a lot we can do with it, but at least with this particular case, I know going northbound where there's the extra two lanes, they've taken advantage of that.
Through the chair. Ed, what's the estimated start and stop time for the season, and also are we looking at five, six, or seven days a week, and what are the hours?
Well, if we can, well, we'd start today if we could. The weather's kind of held us back a little bit, you know, it didn't snow at all, and it snowed about a week and a half ago, but we'd go to work as soon as we can. We think we'll be going by the end of May full speed. We've got quite a few things yet to put together. The project bid once, and it was thrown out and rebid, and it was rebid in February, so it's kind of condensed our normal time to get ready. This is a project you need about four to six months to get ready to go, and so we're working quite a bit right now to get ready to go, and like I say, because we've got a good relationship with Nikki Mallory, the RE on the job, and John Hitten, and the state people, they're, we're moving along pretty quickly. But we will work for sure five days a week. If we have the opportunity to accelerate the schedule, we will work six days a week probably, not by choice, but if it speeds up the overall project, I would expect six days a week.
And then going as long as the season allows?
Yeah, we have to finish certain stages, and that happened to us a couple of years ago, where if we don't finish certain stages, then we're not able to start the next stage because of the traffic flow and the traffic patterns. But the way it's set up right now, I think we should be able to work at least with the main concrete portion into, say, middle to the end of September, and then we have to button it up with some other paving, some other work, and then we'll go away until the next spring.
Daylight hours or daylight day?
Daylight and maybe some dark hours, probably daylight and dark. You're very welcome. Any other questions?
The switch to concrete instead of asphalt is, I haven't seen a lot of that lately. It's mostly all been asphalt. Why is that, and is it what, a foot deep?
Yeah, I think it's, is it 10 inches deep? Do you want to speak for that, please? Yeah, come on. He can give you the real reason.
And I know where a spring is, I did some slab replacement 38 years ago there, and I know where there's a spring on I-5 right past the, where the railroad cuts across the freeway.
Just about Ream there, right in that area?
Yeah, it's right there.
We've worked on it a couple of times in there. So if you'll notice that, for the most part, you'll see us almost every year go out and do some replacement of asphalt through this entire section, and there's some of it that's falling apart right now. And essentially, in my career, I've been in Siskiyou County for about 12 years now. It seems like we spend about a million dollars out here every year. So the strategy change, if you look at the conditions that we have in the Mount Shasta area, you have extreme weather in the winter with chain, and then the summer you turn around and you have pretty warm temperatures. So the big variance in temperatures and conditions aren't very conducive to asphalt. Where the concrete, if you look at the section we did in 2001 when you're coming up the hill, we haven't touched it since 2001, you know, so it's just switching to a more long-term, this will be a 40-year product. Hopefully when we come in here, we can put this concrete in, we're gone for 40 years. You know, that's the idea. Any other questions?
What's the value, what's the price tag on this project?
We're close to 60 million on this. Yeah.
And what's the longevity you anticipate?
40 years.
40 years.
Yep, yep.
Before I forget, I want to mention that we have a very large 4th of July event here, 5,000 people to walk run. Don't do any work on Saturday. I really recommend you not do that.
My name is Lupita Franco, and I work in public information, and our commitment to you and to Mount Shasta and also to people in Dunsmere later on in the project is that we will keep you informed, and I don't know if you're aware, but we have seven ways where on any project that is going on for Caltrans in this area, we communicate with groups and with people and with elected officials, and it's our website, Facebook, Twitter. We have a hotline if there is an emergency and we have to really put like this information. We send emails to, and we're going to send emails to you, emergency, first responders, CHP, police department. So there is a whole communications plan in place, and here are two things for your consideration, and I'm sure you know this, in any project, there is always going to be a group of people that are going to be unhappy and that we just need to manage and to address the valid concerns that are many people at Caltrans that will address them, and there is another part where we're going to manage crowds. Some people don't like to be inconvenienced, and that's why it takes to get roads in good conditions. Another thing for your consideration is there is a large number of truck drivers that go through here. They don't live in Mount Shasta, they live back east, they live in Oregon, they might live further down, and there is, interesting enough, they are on Facebook, and they have blogs, and we have found a way to reach out to them aside from the California Trucking Association. So in wrapping up, there are different stakeholder groups, and we're going to do our best, but because it's a multi-season project, I think we're going to take it one place at a time, and hopefully you have all of our information so that for any concern that we can provide with the information that is appropriate.
Thank you. Well, something that comes to mind, Lupita, is the need to have someone to whom we can direct queries and complaints, and a copy of the communication plan to come to us, and as well as direct ways to communicate by other than email, perhaps cell or whatever the city manager decides, between our Public Works folks and your crews in case something comes up.
And we have it very clear, so Nikki Mallory is our resident engineer. For any concerns that have to do with emergency first responders, she's the one that will address those. For any issues with elected officials, Rob Burnett, I'll be as your public information officer, I'll be the one that you can call me 24/7 on my cellphone, and I'll make sure that any one of them, and John Hinton who's our construction senior, will keep you happy, okay?
I'm here, so I don't care.
Oh, I know, I know. So in other words, in other words, yes, and then as far as the communication plan, this is something we do for every project, and perhaps for this why we're asking, I'll be happy to send the communications plan for this first stage. And let's take it from now towards the end of the summer, and we'll manage the 4th of July, and we'll manage the beginning of the project, and we'll be managing that stage by stage.
Thank you very much. I'm sure that the leadership team may want to discuss it once they receive the communication plan, they may have some feedback to you about events other than the 4th of July or some other things, and one of which is, we always wonder about the grindings, will there be grindings available, and where will they be stored?
The majority of the grindings will be stored on the highway and taken down to Fondale to be used at the plant.
Down to where?
They'll be stored on the highway, and they'll be hauled down to the plant at Fondale, the majority of the grindings.
Any chance of some of those grindings coming to the city of Mount Shasta?
My understanding is there's communication going already down to some of the grindings.
Okay, so that'll be a topic of conversation, Paul.
How long will the central exit southbound be closed, and when, from when to when, do you know?
And you're talking the Lake Street exit?
Yes.
We're actually, I hate to commit on that because basically we're working on that compressed plan, you know, to get it into two seasons instead of three. Our intention is to not close it anymore than we absolutely have to. There are a few things that we have to do, we can't stripe it without closing it, which is about a half-day deal, and then putting the concrete, when you pour the concrete and you go by that intersection, there's a certain point in time you have to let it cure, you can't drive across it immediately, but we absolutely, we know that's a focal point, and we're going to try to minimize that as much as we can.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sure I speak on behalf of the whole council, that the work you've done to the north of us has just been, just a dream to drive over. It's been a real pleasure, and I hope that the improvements you can make will leave drivers with an equal degree of positive response. It is inconvenient, there's no way to get around it, but the degree to which you can help us with the public affairs will be very much appreciated.
And you're going to have the same too that you have on that project.
Okay, great.
And if it's a good thing and you like it, we're going to turn around and we're going to do northbound after this project, which is going to go from the end of the existing concrete section up to Black Butte. So that'll be about, it's like a $110 million job that'll come through, so.
And one more question if we may, are there any specific things that you would like us to do in terms of public outreach? Like, we're planning to send letters to residents that are about, as you well know, about 3,700 in Mount Shasta, and we find that when you get a letter, it's more personal? And are there any other ways that you would like to see?
I think, Lupita, that being as how we've run out of time, the best way would be to communicate, send the communication plan and ask your questions for feedback, and the city manager can handle the communication with all of us.
And Lupita, talk to that fine guy with the Mount Shasta fire jacket on, Giovanni. He's with the newspaper.
Thank you, and good luck. Oh yeah, that was the thing. Are there local contractors you're hiring?
Actually, we have a lot of local Siskiyou County employees, and typically we've been buying product through Cross Petroleum and the local hardware stores and the local, to support the local hardware stores. That's the way I think you should do business, and we do that.
Great.
So yeah, it should really help.
It'd be nice if you publicized that in your communications, yeah.
She's the PR person, I'm just the guy doing the work here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ed. Thanks very much. Oh, no. I'm sorry. Well, welcome, Alyssa. Look forward to hearing your presentation on breast cancer awareness.
So just so you know, the Mount Shasta Bears baseball team is playing their second division playoff game, and it's the sixth inning, and it's eight to seven. So I'm kind of rattled.
And you had to leave.
And I had to leave.
Oh, gosh.
So thanks for having me. Paul asked me to come speak to you about Breast Cancer Prevention Partners and Climb Against the Odds, and just how that infiltrates into our community. So Breast Cancer Prevention Partners is a nonprofit out of San Francisco, and they focus on breast cancer prevention, so they do a lot of advocacy work, and they look at things that are toxic in our environment and translate that into education. One of their big fundraisers every year is Climb Against the Odds, and that is, I think the first year it happened in Mount Shasta was 2003. So every year they get a group of men and women from all over the country, they come together and raise money for Breast Cancer Prevention Partners and climb the mountain. Every year they get, they choose a local climber, so somebody from Siskiyou County to climb with the team, and that person gets to raise money, which is donated back to our community, to an organization called Breast Cancer Services of Siskiyou County. Breast Cancer Services of Siskiyou County is not their own 501(c)(3), so the money comes to Mercy Foundation North. I'm sorry, I should have introduced myself before I started speaking. I'm Alyssa Johnson, I'm the development officer at the hospital. I work for Mercy Foundation North, do fundraising. So we're, we kind of act like a pass-through. Breast Cancer Services of Siskiyou County has their own little committee of survivors and nurses, and they, you know, if somebody needs help, they get in touch with them, and they just let us know, and we basically cut the check. So what they do though, Breast Cancer Services of Siskiyou County, since 2003, I don't know exactly how many local climbers we've had, and let me, I can't read my notes.
Very sorry about the extension cord. You know, I'd like to request, and for the future, that we have an extension cord on hand for any speakers that haven't made the connection with you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so this year, the local climber is a girl named Heather Mason. So since 2003, the local climbers collectively have raised $176,000 for our local charity. Over 121,000 of those dollars have already been dispersed back into the community, and they cover things, basically anything that a woman with breast cancer or her family might need, so uncovered medical expenses, prescription costs, transportation. They fund a program called Be Strong, and it's a month, they pay the membership fee at the wellness center for any breast cancer survivor for lifetime. They do some other things that insurance wouldn't pay for, like acupuncture, massage, they pay for counseling, therapy, so basically anything. And just, so you know, breast cancer is the number one diagnosed cancer for women in Siskiyou County. We have between 40 and 50 cases a year, and those are just the cases that we know of that are reported. If someone gets diagnosed outside of our county, we may not know. And then just some things at the hospital that we do. So we currently offer standard 2D digital mammography. We're raising the money right now, $150,000, to upgrade that to 3D mammography, and we're just about done. When I say "we," I mean "me," so I'm thinking by the end of this month or the end of June. But we also do breast ultrasound, breast MRI, as I said, standard screening and diagnostic mammography. We just got a new 64-slice CT scan, and we're getting a new MRI, hopefully by the end of the year. And we also do breast biopsy, we have a surgeon that does that. So when we get our new MRI, she'll be able to do MRI-guided breast biopsies. We also have a program, a free breast screening program through our foundation, so any woman who doesn't have health insurance or doesn't qualify for Every Woman Counts, which is the government-funded program, or has a high deductible of $5,000 or more, we see that a lot in our community, very high deductibles, will cover the cost of their mammogram, ultrasound, MRI, biopsy. So, and that's completely funded through private donations, so. I don't, did you want me to speak more to the climb? Okay, so this year, the climb, well, it's always in June, and it's usually, usually roughly families start rolling into town on Sunday, and they stay till the following Sunday. It's a really big deal, lots of people come into the community. The year I climbed, we had 30 climbers. It has declined. I think this year, they maybe have 18, but these are people from all over the world, or all over the, well, I guess it could be world, but all over the United States, coming into Mount Shasta. They stay out at the resort, their families come. One night we do a poster-making party, so when the climbers leave from Bunny Flat, the families and community members, whoever wants to, we get together at the resort, we make posters for them, so that when they come down, there's just a lot of people there, the floor service is generally there, families, and everybody's cheering them on. It's a kind of a neat thing when they come down. It's a two-day climb, so they go up to Hidden Valley, spend the night, get up early the next morning, hit the summit, come back down, spend another night at Hidden Valley, and then come all the way out. And it's guided by Shasta Mountain Guides, but sometimes in June you'll see the prayer flags, different businesses have them flying, those are from Breast Cancer Prevention Partners. So we like to decorate the community with those, just to let the families and the climbers know that they're welcome, and we're happy to see them and happy that they're here. This year, it is, sorry, I need to look at my calendar. So this year it'll be, the actual climb is the 14th, and they'll be back, or they leave on a Friday, it's the 15th, and they come back on the 17th, but they're here the week prior to, so. Does anybody have any questions?
It'd be June, right?
What's that?
June?
June. Oh yeah, sorry. I'm all frazzled from the game. Did you, did you want me to cover anything else?
Well, I just wanted to mention that one out of eight women will contact breast cancer in their lifetime, which is really high.
Yes.
You know, it's incredibly, you know, invasive disease, and I mean, everybody's affected by this.
Oh, yes.
And most of the climbers are just regular people. I mean, they're not professional climbers, they're from every walk of life, and most of the climbers have been affected by breast cancer or other cancers in their lifetime. And they're climbing for a person. We get these flags, these prayer flags together, and we write people who are suffering or who have died, or it's highly emotional.
Yes.
When you get involved with this, but we take the flags up to the summit and have a ceremony for these, for the people, and I mean, it's, it's, once you have done something like this, you never forget it. It's a part of your life.
Yeah. I had pictures from the climb, so I was hoping to show them to you guys so you could see just, you know, words don't really do it justice until you're there, so. But it is an amazing experience, and you're right, one in eight women will be affected by breast cancer. The work that the Breast Cancer Prevention Partners, what they're doing though, to me is across the board, it's, you know, not just to prevent breast cancer, but the things that they're exposing, it's really to prevent all types of cancers and other diseases as well. But their focus is breast cancer, so.
Thank you, Alyssa.
You're welcome.
I have, I've attended a fundraiser that was held, I think the year that Brett and you climbed, Paul, and it was extremely moving, very, very moving, and I'm wondering, number one, if you plan to have, if there are plans to have a community fundraiser event this year, number one, and number two, just a request that we be considered for the flags that you hang for in front of City Hall Plaza?
Okay.
So you could show our support.
Okay, I will get in touch with the person to get flags. Number two, there was one fundraiser already at the Woodsman a couple of weeks ago, and I'm not sure what other fundraisers are planned this year by the local climber I can find out. The other thing I want to let you know is on, so that Sunday, June 17th, and you all are invited, the Breast Cancer Prevention Partners puts on a community dinner, so it's the climbers and their families, local dignitaries, there's a couple people from the hospital, but I'll make sure you get the invitation so I know who all will attend, past climbers attend, so it's a really neat event to celebrate the climbers. They tell a story about each one of them and why they climbed, it gets kind of emotional. I used to call it Cry Against the Odds when I did it, and Eat Against the Odds, because the whole time I was, all I was doing was crying and eating.
Alyssa, is that going to be here?
It'll be here, yep, and it's at, I think, 5:30 on that Sunday, June 17th, but I'll double-check. I see all of you pretty regularly, so I'll let you know. But thanks again for having me. Sorry to rush in and rush out, my brother's the coach of the team.
No problem, thank you. Any other questions?
And go Bears.
Yes, go Bears. They're playing Kaluza. It was eight, seven Bears when I left, top of the sixth, so.
Well, best of luck, and thanks again, Alyssa. We don't expect to see you hang out for the rest of the meeting.
No, I think I'm going to go ahead and go.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to turn now to the public comment period. I wonder if either Pam or Jim wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda? No, okay. So seeing none, I will move right through that then to the next item on the agenda, which is council and staff comments. Staff, can we start with you, please?
Thank you, Mayor Mortar. So on the 7th, staff attended a meeting with Rotary and with the Siskiyou Land Trust to discuss the impacts of the proposed library expansion on trail system, gained input from the two groups, and I thought that was the two groups, and I thought that went quite well. It was a very positive, productive meeting. And we also would like to report to State Water Quality Control Board, which is the funder for our Tank One project and the water line going down South Mount Shasta Boulevard. You know, if you may recall, we completed all the planning, environmental work, we were up for construction funding, and they have announced that they overcommitted their Proposition One funds, and therefore they will not be funding that project as planned. There is the possibility they'll be able to get additional funds this summer. So that project, in terms of construction, is on hold. We had looked at funding, moving funds around in the budget, and then getting reimbursements, and they also say they will not fund reimbursements. So if we fund it, we're out. So that project is on hold. So the, the other thing we've been, from a staff standpoint, working on and communicating is, and this question is smoking in the downtown, and, you know, we have an ordinance in place, and staff takes that very seriously. Enforcement of ordinances, kind of the squeaky wheel gets the oil on these things. The city did pass an ordinance, we'll be working on that, and I think working out more aggressively. And I would like Chief Cross to go into now, at this point, a discussion of what his department has been doing and what their plans are for, you know, for enforcing the smoking ban in the downtown. So, Chief?
City Manager, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, generally speaking, I'm going to update on our whole spring activities, if you don't mind. And it seems like an appropriate time, since the weather's turning, but it looks like the weather's going to be bad towards the end of the week. So, welcome to spring, I guess, in Mount Shasta. But anyways, I just wanted to talk about what we're gearing up for in terms of smoking in one, and then also just the activities that come with summer. So what we do at the department, first and foremost, is our public outreach. We have a pretty good impact, actually profound impact, with our social outreach through, through, Facebook. So obviously, we're going to be putting things out, like our rat card that we've built, visitors' guide information, and other educational materials, because education is the key piece to enforcement. The more people know about the rules, or the laws, or the ordinances, they tend to, like most good folks, will, will follow it. So getting that piece out there and education is, is going to be the key piece. So with that said, the department has initiated our TAP program, which is a transient action plan that's been in place for the better part of six years, and we've done it every year since we saw that uptick, basically a phenomenon with the transient population coming into town. So I won't get into detail, but that is more of a documentative-type docu-situation where we track warnings and illegal camping and trespassing, because a lot of these ordinances require our officers to issue a warning before you can take any enforcement action far as a citation. Part of the TAP program will be foot patrol, and I know a lot of people wonder how that works. There is no set-in-stone way we do foot patrol. With the resources we have in terms of scheduling and bodies and the shift, it's when they can do it. There are days when they simply go from call to call to call, and there's really no time to get out and do foot patrol, because it just doesn't allow for itself. But they all know to, whenever possible, get out there and get on foot patrol now that the weather has turned. Far as that staffing goes, we are indefinitely down an officer, it looks like, so we're going to be, you know, going through summer with an officer down. So some of those things that we want to get done aren't going to get done as often as we'd like, because that's just the resources we have. But I have some ideas about that that I'll conclude with towards the end of my little speech here. So other proactive activities that we are doing to improve compliance is, number one, we have worked with John Harch and his tobacco group, anti-tobacco group, and we're going to do all new signs in the downtown district. They're looking at like 14 by 22, 14 by 22-inch signs, so they're going to be significantly larger. Working with city planning, we have language on there. In the upper portion, we're, I'm still waiting for the mock-up from John Harch, but the map will, or the, the sign will also include a map of the district. So it's going to be a little more user-friendly for the folks that truly don't know that there's a no-smoking ordinance. Hopefully, it'll be a little more obvious to the folks that there's no smoking in, in the district. And it'll have a specific map to help them go there. There should be a phone number on there coupled with the ordinance, so they, in case they want to look or call, they can. And along with the public outreach, I have sat down with some primary advocates, the chief advocates for, for the no-smoking, and with, with those folks last week, and I think we have a good understanding about what the expectations are on both sides, what we can and can't do, and, 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 and I think we have a good understanding, and hopefully we can work together, and so these folks can be heard. Because sometimes I think there's some frustration that these things are getting passed, and there's nothing being done about it, which is completely the opposite. We are trying to do everything we can to enforce all ordinances, and all penal code sections, and all vehicle code sections, and all no-camping, and all fires, and all the things that we're trying to do with seven people. So, so I did bring some stats to help you with the dismo-smoking. The ordinance was passed, I think, March of 2017, so we're roughly about 15 months in. And coincidentally, we are adding about one call a month for smoking. So we've had 15 calls for smoking, and it's been, the RP, which is reporting party, has been by the same person every time. But those calls have been broken down, and there's been, we've received information via letter, three walk-ins, five phone calls, and six, and six phone calls, the standard way of our reporting, reporting party. And this stuff goes into our databank, and it has a dispo, I have all the dispos. Couple of these calls have turned into just physical disturbances, because sometimes people don't like to be told what to do out there, and so a couple of these calls have turned into cases where we've had to go in and call the two parties, because things got a little agitated or, or elevated as far as emotions. But other than that, from a data standpoint, 15 calls in 15 months is, is a pretty, pretty positive sign, which tells me that the folks who are smokers in town have adapted well and are complying with the ordinance the way it's currently enforced at this point. So my, my hopes is that we're going to have even less calls in the next 15 months because of the signage alone. And so I, like I said, I'm very positive. In terms of some of the other ordinance issues and the quality-of-life issues, some of the recommendations that I may have for y'all is, and it's a budgetary issue, and it may require, to address some of these quality-of-life issues at, at an expectation or what people may want, it, it may take us maybe hiring at least a halftime strictly code enforcement person. Where what they do is work hand-in-hand with city manager and the city planner, and not, not just camping, fires, smoking, or loitering, or some of these ordinances that are more within the, the ordinances within, in the Muni Code, also sign ordinances, lighting issues, encroachment permits, different things that go on every day that are not in compliance with our Muni Code. And, and I do believe it, it could help generate a little more revenue, not necessarily through fines or things like that, but if people know what the rules are, they will tend to go to the office and get an encroachment permit, or go to the office and, and do something with their special event. And those are different staffing things that we do that also require people to pay. So it's, it's services that we provide, and I think if we had a code enforcement person at least half-time, it could capture some of that revenue that I think we're missing. And not to mention, there's going to be revenue out there for enforcement as well, because that could also enhance our parking enforcement. I know that's a sensitive subject. We've worked on some, some parking meter studies and the, the economics of that, but that's going to take the enforcement person to also go out there and capture that revenue. So at this point, that's just kind of the brief spring, spring kickoff that we're doing at the police department. I am more than happy to take questions, if you have any, and so, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks very much. Questions of the chief?
I have some questions. Thank you.
All right, so one of the, yeah, one of the questions I do have is, in terms of parking enforcement, some of the folks on DIAC would like to see active parking enforcement during the summer tourist season. Can you address that?
Yeah. That, that's another enforcement complexity that we have. We're challenged far as some of those, those things. Right now, we have a 20-hour person, and historically, I don't know if you recall, but that person was hired strictly, basically, for the parking and live scan and dogs. He has been drawn out and to do with code enforcement stuff, but things have gotten so busy far as the live scan and dogs, where parking is not as, parking enforcement's not taking place as often as it has. And when it does, sometimes we're writing tickets to the same folks who are complaining about the two-hour parking. So it's something that is a challenge, and we're going to try to get out there more often, but it's, with the way that it's set up, it's chalking tires at, at a certain time and going back two hours later, and that could be problematic, because, number one, it's on for only four hours for the day, and most of that is taken up through live scans or, or barking dogs. And officers simply don't have time to go out and do the marking of tires, because they can't get back in the two-hour recommended as well to make sure who's there, who's not there with a yellow mark on their tire. So with that said, I have done a staff report internally regarding meters, and what that would take, and what that looks like far as upfront costs, and how long it would take to maybe pay for itself, and then turn it into some type of revenue stream.
In terms of that study, can you share that with DIAC?
As far as I know, DIAC has, has the full report.
Haven't, haven't seen it.
It's on their next agenda, excuse me.
Okay. You mentioned that you're down one officer. Didn't know that, so what more information can you provide?
It's more of an internal thing, and the person's been on admin leave to this point, and I'm not sure when that person's going to get back. So right now, it's a fairly indefinite. I can imagine it's not going to happen before next fall, so, but we're going to get it done, just like we always have, and we'll continue to do what we do.
Okay, thank you.
If possible, I'd love to see an article from you folks in the next newsletter about things to anticipate this summer, what your, what your, what your plans are.
Yeah, we're a step ahead of you.
I'm sorry?
We're a step ahead of you on that.
Kathy Mayer may not have room for it, just as I'm planting a seed there, an idea.
No, no.
Okay.
Well, or Lieutenant Ruston, perhaps with his, what's he called, Next Door?
Well, I think it's just through our own Facebook is how we do most of our public outreach. And like I said, we, from different types of topics, we've reached up to 17,000 views. So it's, like I said, it's a profound way to get out and touch people and give them the information that we think they need, good, bad, or indifferent.
And I do know that Lieutenant Rustine follows Next Door, so it might, might be an opportunity, particularly if he's seeing something that's being said that isn't right on.
Sure. Yeah, he doesn't like correcting things when he has to.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
To the chair. I get, you're, you're aware that in the DIAC meetings, I discovered that they really don't want people who's working downtown to actually park on Mount Shasta Boulevard. So they're encouraging people who actually are employed on the main drag to park away from the downtown.
Yeah, you know, the parking downtown has, sorry, I'll wait for a second, so our viewers can hear. Historically, you know, the, the parking issue, you know, like most things, are complaint-driven, and, and they, they come and go. I mean, I know over the years, just as of last summer, I've reached out to a couple of our larger employers in town, who a lot of their employees were parking on the Boulevard for the duration of their shift. So we just reached out, talked to them, and we got compliance, because there's a lot, a lot of parking just behind everything, even on Chestnut, and some of the spots where there's no need to park on the Boulevard during your workday. So some of that is going out and just talking to the people, and we have sent letters out, advising if such, and we usually get instant compliance from the employees who sometimes want to park close to work.
Just one last comment from me, and that is my appreciation for the work that you're doing with John Harch's Anti-Tobacco Coalition. I think that those additional signs will be great, and I think it's a great example of the partnering that can happen between government and nonprofits and/or residents, which I think we, we need to see more of.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Instead of expecting our small Department of Employees to do everything. So hopefully, it'll be covered in the newsletter as, as a, as an example of, of the kinds of things we welcome and frankly need in order to move forward on things. And I was also happy to hear that you are enforcing the, getting rid of the butt bucket out in front of the Vets Club. It's really, it's a, it's a flagrant violation. I, I can appreciate from their perspective how difficult it might be, but it's, it's just inexcusable.
Yeah.
And I have, by the way, followed a few people downtown who are smoking away, and I've just approached them and, and let them know that we, that there's a ban on smoking downtown, and they didn't know, and they were very kind about it. And I, and I realize that how we approach people has everything to do with their response, so.
I wanted to touch on that. I mean, if you look at some of the dispositions of our, the 15 that were received, at least half of those, the, the folks were just unaware. You know, they didn't know. So I think the signage and then the educational push, and, you know, in hindsight, I kind of wish the visitors' guide card, but I think the inception of that, that wasn't an ordinance as of yet. So if we do another round of making those, we should include that, because that, I think that could be part of the educational process. Because like I said, I have faith in all, all of humanity, and I, I believe that the majority of us want to follow the rules, just as long as we know what those are. And I think that piece, informing partnerships, and education's going to be everything for this.
And lastly, I just want to thank Betty Krieger for
Sure, absolutely.
sticking to it, and hopefully she'll be happier with the results, and appreciate her understanding of the many complexities you deal with.
Yeah.
One through the chair. Chief, do you, what's the estimated cost for the halftime code, strict code enforcement?
That was part of the, in the study, I think right now, roughly out the door, you know, Social Security, health insurance, and vehicle cost, and some uniform, it's about 40-ish, I would say, for everything.
20 hours.
Yeah, for 20 hours, for that person. So I think another 40, I mean, I think, you know, for where I'm sitting, and some of the grief that we have to gone through as a city, it, it's been up that, that alley, you know? Far as the crime and, you know, things like that, we're, we're built for that. It's that code enforcement piece, where the police department, we don't get that training, you know? We're ill-equipped for that, to how to handle, well, the sign has too much square inches, huh? You know, or whatever's going on, the yard's dirty, you know? That's, that's a specific type of training and supervision. And I think this person, you know, it may be out there, maybe not at halftime, you know, but it just depends what our needs are. And a lot of our conversations internally, even with, 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 with the mayors and different council members, a lot of these issues that we're dealing with are quality-of-life issues slash code enforcement, whether it's smoking, whether it's camping, whether it's transits. A lot of these things are not criminal in nature. You know, and a lot of the training that we've gone through as a group is, you know, some of the experts, we can't criminalize some of these issues, because I know it works for us, because that's how we deal with it. We want to criminalize it, now we can take action, and we want to take people to jail. But to contrary to the facts is, some of these things are not criminal in nature. Even the smoking is, is more of a code enforcement, it's not necessarily criminal. Yes, if we catch them and they're our presence, we can write a citation, but like I said, the officers, you know, some of these different issues are not, you know, it's not in their training to keep an eye on these type of things. And I think that, in looking into the future, and some of the goals that we want to accomplish would be a huge, huge step forward. It may be a baby step with halftime, finding the right individual who's built for that type of, type of work. It could really benefit the city from my vantage point.
Well, I agree that awareness-building education is, is really key, and I think the signing will really help. I'm looking forward to it. Any other questions of the chief? No, without, I'd like to, thank you very much, Parrish.
No, anytime.
I'd like to, yeah, I think it's really helpful to get like a quarterly report or something. It's great to hear from you.
Well, I'm thinking monthly. When we do the monthly newsletter, I think I'll come and provide you what, what we're working on proactively, and then if there's something reactively that's causing me some stress or heartburn, or, or just the opposite, I'll, I'll report to you and keep you abreast, and more importantly, the folks who are viewing.
So we, we know this is an issue, and the public's interested and interested in, and so I've asked Parrish to give some stats for the monthly reports, so that the public can see what we're doing in a, in a proactive basis.
Great. And well, you know you have a lot of supporters in this community, and I think they are anxiously seeking more information, so I appreciate your commitment to that. I think it's helpful. I, I do have one question for you, Bruce, to back up to your presentation about the Roseburg Tank One non-funding. I, I just wonder if, as you're putting together a request for consideration from, from U.S. Rural Development through Kim Van, that, that, that perhaps we add this to our list, now unfunded list of projects? I don't know where you stand with priorities, working that out with Rod, but it appears that that's going to go undone.
We're hoping there'll be funding for this. It'll come out of two, one of two propositions.
I can't hear you very well, Bruce.
Hmm?
I can't hear you very well.
I'm sorry. We're hoping that there'll be funding out of one of the two propositions going up this summer. And we're also looking at other funding sources. We want to move this project and get this going. It's very critical to the development of the land that we have this, this part of the infrastructure addressed and in place. of the infrastructure addressed and in place. So we'll keep pushing on it, exploring alternatives.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other staff comments? Kathy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As a reminder to our residents living within the city and in the sphere of influence, we are actively seeking volunteers for all of our Brown Act committees. Our Active Transportation Committee has six vacancies currently. Beautification Committee has one vacancy. Community Economic Development Advisory Committee has one vacancy for representative of a local financial services business and the Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee has two vacancies.
Thank you.
To the chair. Are you saying Active Transportation is a seven-member body?
Correct. When I started here, it only had five members seated and moving forward, that's all that there was and then looking back at the original formation, formative resolution, it's actually a seven-member body.
So then we need four for quorum?
Correct.
Do we want it to be a five-member body or do we want seven?
We can bring it back as an action item in the future if you like.
Okay, time for council comments. Who'd like to begin? Gosh, don't all rush to begin first. Okay, well, I'll start. Let's see, I'd like to thank Public Works for preparing Parker Plaza for the mural painting. It's all cleaned up. I'm anxious for, to see the progress that hopefully John Utac from DIAC will be able to accomplish this week. I think that was what you told us, Bruce, that he would be starting his mural painting and hopefully even finishing it.
Right, so we hope here in the next month that John will actually start sketching that out.
Great, yeah, it definitely needed cleaning up and preparation for that and I just want to have you pass on my, our thanks to the Public Works crews. Start a farmer's market today. For those of you who didn't notice, the traffic closures and the big crowds downtown, I'll just invite all of you to support our local farmers and our makers of good things that aren't necessarily growing in a garden. We've started early this year and it's a great collection of people. They're working very hard on bringing us what is available. A reminder that Science Festival is happening this Saturday, basically all day, nine to five or something, six, I've forgotten the exact times, in downtown Mount Shasta. They are still seeking volunteers, particularly for setup and teardown, so if you are at all available to work even as little as an hour in helping some of that, please contact Jean Nels at the museum or Glenn Harvey at 925-9287. And again, I'd like to thank John Harch for his work with the tobacco organization, the name of which I've forgotten, forgive me, for your partnering with the city on the signing downtown for non-smoking. I have a couple of announcements I'd like to make that I was privy to at the Women in Business meeting. There is a, they're starting up, The Hatchery, which is an entrepreneur support effort at College of the Siskus, is beginning something called First Friday's Sisku Startup Stories Pub Talk Series. It's open to the public and the first one is Friday, June 1st, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Mount Shasta Brewery in Weed. And the guest speaker is Chad McCall of Mountain Medics, somebody who's created his own business and doing very well. So for those of you who are budding entrepreneurs or supporting budding entrepreneurs, please join them Friday, June 1st, 6 o'clock at the Mount Shasta Brewery. And another program provided by The Hatchery at COS is a class called Introduction to Entrepreneurship. Registration now being open and the class starts June 4th. It's primarily an online class, will meet four times in person at the incubator called The Hatchery and you can find more information at their website, siskus.edu. So I want to encourage those of you who are even thinking about starting up a business. It looks like we are building support for those of you who have that as a goal in your life. And that's it for me. Anybody else? Comments? Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to item number eight on your agenda, consideration of city contribution to the Trail Town Celebration Event. Can we hear?
Before we go there?
Oh, I skipped the consent agenda. Thank you. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added hereto shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, Approval of Minutes, April 23rd, 2018, regular city council meeting. B, Acceptance of Brown Act Committee Minutes, Beautification Committee, March 14th, 2018, Library Tax Advisory Committee meeting, February 5th and March 28th, 2018. And C, Approval of Disbursements, Accounts Payable 4/25/18 and Total Gross Payroll and Taxes for the Period Ending 4/22/18. May I hear a motion for approval?
Move to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C as just read.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? Okay, unanimous approval, thank you. Now, consideration of city contribution to Trail Town Celebration Event, item number eight on your agenda. Kathy, you have a report for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you may recall, this last year, the City of Mount Shasta was selected as the first trail town by the Pacific Crest Trail Association. And what a trail town is, it's a town that supports hikers with services, promotes trails to its citizens, and embraces trails as a resource to be protected and celebrated. Since last fall, the city staff and Mayor Mortar have been working in conjunction with the Pacific Crest Trail Association, the Forest Service, the Chamber of Commerce, the Mount Shasta Trail Association, and local volunteers to organize an inaugural celebration to take place in July. We've had several organizations already agree to sponsor it, including the Pacific Crest Trail Association, which is going to sponsor up to $2,500.
Can you slow down just a little bit? Thank you.
Our event is going to consist of several activity and informational booths, demonstrations, speakers, and we have two bands lined up as well. The group is requesting the city sponsor the event in the way of staff time, equipment use, and a donation of up to $1,500. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Kathy, thank you.
Not a question for Kathy, but a question for staff. I'm supportive of the staff suggestion that we support this financially. What account would that be coming out of?
Go ahead.
Mayor Mortar, council. The Chamber of Commerce has agreed at our last staff retreat that the chamber will be the fiscal agent for this event. Mayor Mortar proposed just about that. We put it to vote at our board meeting and they unanimously selected, said we would be the fiscal agent. I've already received one check for $250. So we're establishing an account under Trail Town and we'll pay the bills for y'all and for everybody and receive the money to take that portion of the event.
Thank you, Jim. I think Tim's question was directed at what, which of our accounts will our contribution come from?
It would come out of your general fund for special events and promotions.
Through the chair. So Bruce, how many events like this of similar nature, sort of a city, more regional promotional event, do we, does the city general fund sponsor or assist in the management of? This would be an additional one, so I'm pretty sure if we do the Fourth of July event, we contribute to that? No? Do we contribute to any other events?
No, that's a chamber event. This is an event of the city that differs from some of the other events that we have talked about where the city participates in funding. Those are private events. This is a city event that we're looking for funding on.
But do we fund any other events in the past? Does anybody know?
Don't we provide staffing for the Fourth of July? Isn't that one?
Correct. So looking at historically, so for the Fourth of July, it's a very different situation. The Fourth of July does not pay vendors' fees. They also do not pay the permit fee for the special event permit. In exchange, a check is cut of the percentage of the funds that Jim raises from the vendors, which ends up being a lot more money than if we were to make him pay vendor fees and the application fee. So we go through that process. We also do waive the application fee for the Fourth of July fun run with the Mount Shasta runners and also provide in-kind services through city departments. I believe we'll be having our first Fourth of July meeting here in the next couple of weeks. Wednesday, I will put it on my calendar. As far as financial amounts and paying for regional sponsorship type questions for council member Stackfluff, the city does have an economic development fund that is used for regional promotion. I believe it was the fund that Muriel used for the CDAC program that was doing some regional advertisement and so ideally, it could come from that one, but that's fueled, that's not fueled, but that's funded from the general fund. It's a section that Muriel anticipates that we're going to probably have to pay for some economic development related things. I can't remember how much was in that fund for this year or at least, like I said, it's not really in a fund or earmarked, but we anticipate using it for economic and marketing situations like this.
Okay, so I hate to push this, but is this then a new and novel thing that the city is doing, actually taking general fund monies and helping to pay for an event? Yes or no?
Not necessarily, no.
Can anyone name an event where the city general fund has actually paid for the events?
The police department used to be in charge of the Car Show and Shine and only recently has gifted that over, well, not gifted because the masons are doing it, but so previously, the Car Show and Shine, and I wish Parrish had stayed a little bit because he was very well-connected with that one. The Car Show and Shine did collect city funds and also had city in-kind donation of our services because the police department ran that. So that was not done by, like, for example, the Mount Shasta Fire Department uses the Mount Shasta Volunteer Firefighters Association to help put on a lot of their events and do some of that upfront cost, but the police department did do the Car Show and Shine themselves inside their department. They've only recently got rid of it to the masons or kind of switched over to them just because of the work that goes into managing that type of event.
Transferred.
Transferred. Words are hard.
I'd like to comment if I may. John, I think your question is a good one. And I see the sponsorship of this event as the letter, I think the staff report indicated, as a partnership between the chamber, the Pacific Crest Trail Association, who is contributing at least $2,500 to this event this year, and the city. And the reason is for it's, we're hoping that, and this is not new, that our being a destination town for trail use, we hope to become a larger and larger cornerstone of our economy. But I do think this is the first event of its type, to my knowledge. We thought about taking it to the Downtown Enhancement Committee, but frankly, didn't have enough time to do that this year. It might be as we continue this partnership in the future that we consider taking it to the Downtown Enhancement Committee as long as it's going to be downtown and will benefit the businesses downtown. The partnership is, the core of the partnership is between the chamber, the city, the U.S. Forest Service, the Trail Association, and the Pacific Crest Trail Association. Our long-term goal is to solidify that and strengthen that partnership and leverage the resources and funding opportunities that each of those partners can bring to building our identity as a trail town and promoting it and accommodating improved visitor services. So I could add that we have solicited, I personally have solicited, the Rotary Club, who has contributed as well as several businesses in town, three of whom have already committed funds toward this. So I see the $1,500 that we're requesting as an upper end and a kind of a catch-all depending on how short we may fall. And I appreciate the chamber's fiscal sponsorship of this. That's a big load off of what could be ours, a job that they do well and it's much appreciated. So that's it for now. That helps explain things. Okay, any other questions?
Public comment?
I'm sorry?
Public comment?
Okay, do you have any more questions? Council of staff?
We should call for the public comment.
Okay, okay. Is there a public comment on this item?
Well, we're going to sit up.
Come on up to the mic, Jim.
We've agreed not only just to be the fiscal sponsor, but also we're going to be the contact area for the hikers coming off the trail. We're creating a area in our small room we have available to us in the back of the office. We're creating a shelving system to take packages, to have sent there for them, free Wi-Fi for when they come in. I'm creating a directory of services right now for them, which we'll post at Trailheads and stuff like that to get them off the trail into town. So it's a process we're working with the PCT and the Trail Town Committee that's going on right now, but it's just a win-win for town. We get a lot of these visitors coming through the visitor's center and this is basically going to be a Mount Shasta visitor's center sponsored thing, not a Chamber of Commerce sponsored thing, so we're going to separate that because that's, the area will come under. But it's just logical that we are the contact point as people come to town. We're working with the stage right now, Sisku County Stage, to increase the stage run through to Costella to get them back to Mount Shasta without having to shuttle them back and forth, which we do a lot of during the summer. So there's a lot of great things happening from this and recognition statewide and trail-wide for us being the trail town. So it's a win-win for all of us, I believe. That's why we're on board with Mayor Mortar and moving forward with this project. It's just another event for us. We're really busy between now and that time, so there's a lot happening in town this summer. Yeah, so we embrace this and we're looking forward to being that partner on it.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, is there council discussion?
I'd like to move adoption of Resolution Number CCR 18-23. Resolution, City Council, the City of Mount Shasta, supporting the Trail Town Celebration and outlining the city's participation in the event and authorizing up to, up to a maximum $1,500 for sponsorship, not to exceed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
And I would ask that the resolution be modified to read "not to exceed."
Up to, what does it say, up to now?
Not to exceed.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Opposed.
Opposed. John Stackfluff. Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on now to item number nine, first reading of CCO 18- I've forgotten.
Well, it's not an ordinance yet, it's just the first reading.
So we don't give it a number?
It doesn't get a number until the second reading.
Not yet.
Okay. -XX on special events ordinance. Can we hear from you, Juliana?
So at the last meeting, there were some minor changes to the ordinance, so we decided to bring it back for another first reading. The only change that I did not make is on page 29 of your packets. There was a request to add, the application shall be filed no less than 45 days for those with food vendors and less than 30 days for without food vendors. I decided not to add that because if you continue to read in that section, there's a statement that says the minimum 45-day requirement may be waived by the city manager upon written finding that the limited scope of the event allows it to be adequately reviewed in the time provided. I didn't really want to put the less than 45 days for food vendors and then say less than 30 days for non-food vendors and confuse people by that reading and we already have a provision in there to. and confuse people by that reading. And we already have a provision in there to allow people without food vendors to still apply outside the minimum 45 days. So I did not add recommendation. Otherwise, everything else went in as prescribed.
One of the, sorry, I didn't have a chance to read the, the update, but one of the things was to put the 45 days relative to the application, not to the event. Is that what it was?
Correct. Well, it's 45 days prior to the event happening, as we need an application filed. And if you happen to have a smaller event, say, for example, you don't have food vendors, it's only like six vendors and they wanted to use Parker Plaza, we can adequately approve that in like 14 days, frankly. It's, it's basically just saying for those major events, you know, like I said, for Fourth of July, some of the bigger things that we need to have those food vendors in, health and safety, we need them to be in at least 45 days ahead of time so that we can approve that as soon as possible, so.
And for those larger events, I'm sure they apply far before 45 days. Is that something we're able to prioritize and, and get back to the applicants as soon as we can?
Yeah, and most of our applicants are really good about that. You know, our consistent events, Dotson applies eight months in advance, nine months in advance. Jim gets Fourth of July ready to go by the end of the year, the year prior. You know, and then we have subsequent meetings afterwards. And then if you have new events, so for example, the Science Festival, they've been planning this for over a year. They've been working with city staff and, and coming in and talking to us. So most of the major events consistently meet with us, probably well over six months in advance. So, but you know, again, if someone wants to do a more minor event, and like I said, it's six vendors in the Parker Plaza area. If people give, I mean, for my schedule personally, I'm probably the busier of the department heads, 14 days. So if it's a really limited scope, Bruce can say it's a limited scope, let's get together and meet about it and approve it as soon as possible.
Thank you. Other questions of Juliana? Is there a public comment? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Once again, we had the, at our last chamber retreat here on April 30th, we had the, Juliana came and spoke to all of us and going over all the different things were going on here with the city, which we greatly appreciated. You did a wonderful job. During part of that procession was the special events ordinance and we had no problem with that. I've reviewed it with her during this process. And it's, you know, if you do events, it's, it's easy. You just follow the rules, fill them out and dot your Ts across your I's. You know, most people I work with on the events, you know, I touch base with public works before I even write in a permit to make sure it's possible and we have their participation, so. We are full, we're full supporting the new special events ordinance. We have no problem with that as a chamber board directors. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay.
I'd like to move the, move this proposed ordinance to a second reading?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, hearing non-unanimous approval. Thank you. Okay, we move now then to the first reading of the sign ordinance.
All right.
For graphics ordinance.
Graphics, yeah.
Oh, yes.
It'll, it'll be graphics after this. I know, I've been changing how I talk about it too. So there were no recommended changes made in the last city council meeting that I caught. So I didn't make any changes, but what I did in the meantime is I did go and meet with the chamber board to discuss signs as well as special event permits at the time, answered their questions. And then I also went to the Open for Business meeting and discussed this with them as well and had some other conversations with John Kennedy Senior about the ordinance itself and really received similar feedback that we got from the initial meetings with them, especially Open for Business. The initial meeting I had with them talked about more flexibility, you know, looking at each situation, working with specific businesses on their specific issues and basically, you know, communicated that with, with them, the changes that are here and really no big issues. You know, there is always the talk of adding more sign options, which is always something we can do in the future as we get a better feel for the, the urban design and community character piece. But in the meantime, this, this makes sure that we have a process that's much more flexible. I'm meeting with people on a case-by-case basis and able to, you know, get, get them the ability to message their business in a way that's unique to them, but also really fits the character still of, of being here. And I think these interim changes will do that. Like I said, taking that case-by-case and kind of cleaning up some of the language that we have in, in the ordinance.
Thank you. Questions of Juliana?
Juliana, on the perpendicular signs, did you make any changes from? No?
I did not. I was not given direction to do that in the last meeting. And as I stated in the last meeting, if we're going to do that, that's something that's going to need to go back to Planning Commission. There are certain things you have to keep in, in context when you're talking about perpendicular signs because obviously it's not like a flush mounted sign. Not everyone can have one at the same field. And so you have to then come up with recommendations for how often you can have them, at what heights you can have them, so that they're staggered and visible. So they are a little tricky to kind of do those types of guidelines. And so we would need to go back for more discussion on those particular ones. But one of the things is, you know, there's a few people who have talked about them, but there really isn't a huge demand for them at the moment.
Other questions?
Do you want to touch on some of the things that you have in the queue that you need approval on? To maintain good business relationships?
Oh, oh, I have about seven, as of today, I have about seven businesses who are waiting for the possible changes to happen or the proposed changes to happen because of the signable area piece. Best Western's the biggest one. So, yeah, they've been waiting about eight months because they're, they're one of the few who kind of started this process with their situation and their flush mounted sign. Besides that, we've had six other businesses that are kind of just waiting in the wings because right now they don't qualify for certain signage, just based off of the current language. The other thing, as far as, you know, other, are you asking also about other items that we're working on or?
I can talk about a little more in the discussion period, but I just wonder if you wanted to touch on it. That's about maintaining good business relations with, you know, and also, like, you touched, what you said about how many you have in the queue right now that need to be, that are waiting?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing that we've had with different businesses and their signage is, it has been addressed significantly in this, one of which is how we determine the costs of each permit. And then we determine how the permit is reviewed, aren't consistent. So if it's six feet and over, it's $245 flat fee. But as far as review, it only goes to Planning Commission if it needs a building permit. So even if it's over six feet and it's been previously permitted, it technically doesn't have to go to Planning Commission, but yet they're held to that higher fee, which doesn't make sense because they're not paying for the adequate services it needs to present that case. That's the current one. There's some really odd things in the current one that we kind of fixed that were like that, that were inconsistent. You know, as far as the other issues, like I said, the biggest thing we heard was just flexibility with each case. And I think we've solved that here. Like I said, Open for Business had some questions about their specific situations. And then the chamber as well, there was one individual who just asked questions about his specific situation. And he actually came in later and met with me and we discussed, you know, how we would deal with that under the new ordinance. And they all felt pretty comfortable with that. So I, I think it'll be helpful getting us to a more mutual understanding of what we're trying to achieve, which is to do something that's going to make the city look nicer aesthetically and it's going to give business owners kind of an option and, and ability to, to put out a unique message.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, I'd like to open it now to the public hearing, comments from those of you in the audience.
Wow, thank you, Mayor Mayor. Mr. Mayor and council. Once again, this was discussed at our chamber retreat board and we had a lot of chamber board members, we had a dozen of them there, in fact, to represent a wide array of businesses here in town. And they asked the questions of Juliana and one of our board members did go and talk to you personally. He had some more questions. But the consensus was when she left the meeting that they were all good with the sign ordinance also, as, as explained by Juliana. So, and I've had no one come through the chamber complaining or worried about the new sign ordinance or any, anything like that yet, so. As the chamber stands, we're supporting Juliana and the new sign ordinance, so just want to be here for that. Okay? Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. Nice to hear from you. Thank your board. Thank your board for your attention, yeah.
And as a brief discussion, Juliana did a great job of explaining the sign ordinance, the graphic ordinance to Open for Business. Also did a good job of, of addressing John Kennedy's questions and issues that he had raised at the last meeting. And with that, I would move the proposed ordinance of the city of Mount Shasta, amending the Mount Shasta Municipal Code, Chapter Eight, quote, "signs," close quote, to a second reading.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Paul's abstaining.
Okay, Paul's abstaining, yes. Thank you. Okay, we move now to council reports on attendance at appointed outside meetings. You had written "none," Kathy, and, but I have something I, I need to report on, which occurred on Friday, which is the League of California Cities. Shall I wait until the next council meeting?
I would recommend waiting until the next conference.
Okay. That's fine. So if you'll just make a note that it's the League of California Cities Sacramento Valley Division quarterly meeting.
And I'd love to talk with you about that outside the meeting.
Sure.
So are we moving to item 12?
So this is, this is the Grass Valley one or the July one?
July.
I'm talking about Grass Valley. Okay, okay, future agenda items. Any proposals that?
Yes, on the future agenda items, number or item L, Thrive Hive and Offsite meeting. Thrive Hive, as you may recall, is the new name for the Propel program that we are more familiar with. We heard presentation on Propel. I would like to see that come to the council on the next meeting so that we can get that included in the 2018, 2018 budget.
That is already planned for next meeting. We're already working on it.
Okay, perfect.
Any other changes, suggestions? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.